I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note roll call.
Well, I'll take that. All present, Pat via phone, Dave via...
Maybe through video.
Video.
Okay. Pat, are you going to be able to give us the correspondent report?
Yep, I'm having a hard time understanding. Am I up?
Yes.
You're up.
Okay. I talked about some bills that were going before the governor last month, and he did sign three of them. One required the Department of D P I to create an online portal that displays all the financial data collection from all school districts. That one he signed. The other one was the, about the safe haven law. The districts have to put that into their curriculum. Remember the safe haven law, that a parent can leave a newborn that's under seventy-two years, seventy-two hours old with the police and nine eleven staff or the hospital without fear prostitution. That one was signed. And everyone that was signed was a bill that requires schools to provide information to parents on youth apprenticeship. What did not pass was the overhaul of the reading readiness program. That would have been another mandate and unfunded, of course, because that's how we use the R. We all know that the 1.2 trillion bipartisan infrastructure bill is there in the United States House, and if I got signed today by the president, I'm not sure. There's some things in there for education, for broadband investment, clean energy for school buses, grants to schools and nonprofits for energy efficient improvements, to remove lead contamination in school drinking water. So there's some things in there for education. And then lastly, I probably have all heard about the controversy going on between the National School Board Association, the White House, and the Department of Justice. Because of that, Wisconsin Association School Board voted to withdraw its association with that organization. They're citing it. They said the core responsibility of local school boards is to promote community engagement and foster relationships. They said unfortunately, the National School Board Association needlessly caused substantial controversial controversy this fall, which has negatively impacted relationships among school boards, parents, and community members. Important to note that Wisconsin is one of 26 state school board associations to pull out of that organization. So that's my report to the night.
Question. Are you sure we pulled out?
Yes.
Or if we just took a step back?
Took a step back. We took a step back. I talked to...
We took a step back.
Yes, exactly. I talked to him. Yeah, I talked to him.
Because I think our dues...
They decided to withdraw its association's participation.
Right. We're taking a pause.
Yeah, we're taking a pause.
We're taking a pause.
We're going to whoever's asked to withdraw the association's participation in the National School Board Association. They're going to relook at it, but for now, they pulled our association.
Right, but our dues are paid through July.
Because I think our dues are...
Our dues are paid through July.
Our dues are paid for, so...
Right.
Because at least that's what I was... We had that discussion at CISA on Wednesday.
I talked to John Ashley.
Oh, you did?
I called him. I talked to him at length, yes. So we're taking a pause. Our dues are paid. There are things that were going on that were not what many states wanted. The person that was chosen to be the leader is resigning or forced to leave, and there's all kinds of...
At the national level.
At the national level, right.
So what's in her report isn't exactly what is actually happening.
Well, I talked to John Ashley last week, Friday, maybe?
Okay.
Thursday or Friday? So they are trying to hire a new executive for the national organization, but they haven't done that yet. So our dues are paid through July of 2022. So we're just taking a pause.
Well, maybe with the new leadership, they'll reevaluate, and then maybe our pause will end.
Right. And as he said, there are many things that are good with the national association, but this has been kind of an ongoing irritation for many state leaders.
Okay. Any other questions for Pat? Thank you, Pat. Moving on to you, Mick.
Yeah?
I don't really have a whole heck of a lot. Jeff was down in Florida, so we used the new media room, which is really nice. I mean, it's beautiful. It's got plugins all over on the tables. You can... There's microphones all over, so you don't have to worry about hearing.
That's at the Green Bay, at CISA.
At CISA, yeah. It's really nice. And they've set it up for taking training, you know, so people don't have to run to Green Bay. I mean, he can see us. I mean, it's really nice. So it was kind of nice to have the meeting in there, so he could see how it all worked. He did talk about the student loan forgiveness program, and it's anybody in the private sector. There's 149 people in our CISA seven region that have taken advantage of this. It's driven on by your income. You have to be in the private-public sector for 10 years working, and it's about a $450 to $5 a month savings. So...
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It's a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's 900 and some that filled out the paperwork but didn't pull the trigger, because it costs you like $900 a year to join and do this every year, but still, you know? Anyway, the convention, as far as we know, as I know, is still going on in person down in Milwaukee. I don't know if they're going to require proof of vaccination or masks, or nobody kind of knows that yet, but they are planning on having it in person.
I think they would have to have that on the registration.
You would think so, but...
Yeah, so I don't think they're...
They couldn't tell me yes or no, sue today or Andrew, whatever his last name is. They're both sit on the policy committee, so they couldn't tell me. So I got to figure out what I'm going to do. That's it.
Any questions for Mick?
When I did get my... I did get my thing from the W A S B on looking to find a new administrator, the binder. It's quite extensive.
Yeah, there is. Whenever you're looking for new people, it's a lot of work.
So anyway, that's my homework.
Okay. Student representative report. Julia.
So one last thing for football, because I know every time I've been here, I've been talking about football. But we want to congratulate Carter Dashlet and Kaden Barton for getting eight-man South Region, All-Region. So they got, Carter Dashlet got Offensive Line Award, and then Kaden Barton got Defensive Back Award for that. And then basketball is in full swing now. Girls' basketball has a game tomorrow against Ashwabandhan, and they had a scrimmage on Saturday. And then boys' basketball is, their first practice is right now. Band, the... They, both bands had performed at the Veterans Day concert on Wednesday for the Veterans Day, obviously. And then middle school performed at the Elementary School Veterans Day program, which was on Thursday. And then December 11th, there will be the dinner concert, and that's fundraising for the band trip. And then choir went to Carthage College, and then they were able to tour the campus. And then they had a clinical with the chorus teacher that's at the campus. And then they were able to listen to other choirs from around the area, and they were able to perform. So I thought that was pretty cool for them to do. And then they vocal ensemble performed at the Veterans Day program, which was on Thursday. And then they will also be participating at the dinner concert. And then social studies and English for the freshmen are doing cross-curricular activities. That's where they're learning about leadership, and they are researching people throughout history that were leaders, and they have to do a presentation on that. And then they also did art integration, which is English and art combined. And then that's like an artist collage, where they were able to work together and make a collage with magazines. And then Ms. Lewis is also making like, or having her students make masks with fears from the, or what their fears are. And then they have to portray it with, just at a glance. So they had people, mannequins, I think, and they put like clay on that, and they have to paint their fear on it. So I thought, hmm.
Wow, yeah.
And that's it.
Okay. Questions for Julia? That was a lot. Thank you. Not going on. Okay. Next section is misconceptions and rumors. Not a whole lot on this meeting. The first thing I would like to say, though, is that I think that there's some misunderstanding of, in terms of our meeting. This is a monthly business meeting of the school board held in public. It is not a public meeting. We've got the public participation time, because we do want input, and we do post our agenda, so that you can see what we're discussing in our business meeting, so that you can give us input, you know, so that we have, you know, so that we've heard it before we're making our discussion and our decisions. It's our responsibility to listen respectfully, you know, respectfully to anybody who wants to speak to us. But then after the public participation part, the public's role is that of observer, and we would expect then that you would allow us to continue on with our business meeting. We are in this configuration, which can look a little confusing, like we're talking to you guys when we're talking, but that's just because we're set up this way. But it's really our meeting, and we're set up this way so that the audio for the tapes and everything is heard better. So the intention isn't that we're... I mean, some people have felt like we're ignoring the group that's out there, or we're talking to them if we're talking negatively about something, and that really isn't the case. So I just sort of wanted to clear that up, because that seems to be sort of a misunderstanding of a lot of people. The next one I want to bring up is something that's been running around about the elementary school. And I think maybe I'll let Katie discuss it. But it had to do with that our students there are a year or two behind students in other schools.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. And I don't know, Barb, that I have a whole lot to add to that. I just think, like you said, that's something that I, that was kind of brought to me. And I think, you know, as is standard practice with most school districts, you purchase a curriculum, and it aligns just so to the standards, X, Y, Z. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to remember that we're teaching children, and we're not, you know, teaching robots, and, you know, we have to adapt to what they really need. And I think that's where the art of teaching really comes in. So we could have, you know, the perfect curriculum, but at the end of the day, we're serving our students. We're not...
Well, and again, with this discussion that's out there, there's, you know, what are they looking at? I mean, I know that there are certainly students in every school district that are struggling a little bit because of the whole pandemic, and especially the schools that were virtual or partly virtual or whatever. So there are some kids. It's a recognized need that they need to catch up. But I certainly have never seen in any of our test scores or anything that we are behind any other school. So hopefully, that rumor will die out, and you've heard it here. It's not true. And then the last thing, I know we've said it before, but I'm going to say it again, because it just, it seems to be something that keeps coming up in the news that I'm reading in terms of school districts. Let me say it now. We have never and have no intention to teach critical race theory at this school. We never have. We never will. So we've said that before, but I know people, it's still out there, and they're concerned about it. So I wanted you to hear it from me. Agreed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We are to public participation. Could you... Thank you. Rory VanderVon.
It's my understanding that everybody backs Ann Schmidt on the board for what she said? That's what it said in the news and everything? I was wondering if I could clarify that? You guys aren't on the board. I'm just asking.
Can we respond to that?
Yeah, I think I will respond to that. Yes, I back Ann as a board member.
No, I'm not talking about her as a board member. I'm talking about what she said.
I am allowing her to have an opinion and maybe say it in an awkward way, but I do not feel that personally that has any impact on her ability to be an excellent board member. So I support her.
Can the rest of us say?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is my take on this. Although I don't think I agree with how it came out, nor would I have, would have, I think she would like to have Bango said something a little different. But I do defend her right to say it under the Constitution. So that's where I stand on it.
I was just wondering if that's normal, like this is the standard, because it doesn't seem like it even happened from, I mean, she made a statement that she was embarrassed, but she never actually apologized. I just, I can't, I can't sit and think that that's just, that's just okay, that's just normal. I don't know, is there some sort of a, there might be some sort of policy you guys can come up with? Make sure that this doesn't happen again, maybe some punishment for something like that? I was hoping that...
It's a toughie. It's selected.
I was hoping that, well, we, if you pass this at this point, an apology sure would work. And I actually printed off a little sheet here to help you formulate an apology. You must understand that these are our kids that you're talking about. And when you tell us that if they simply don't agree with you, that they can just die, it doesn't sit right, and it's got to be, you need to be held accountable for it. You need to, you need to come up with a real apology.
Rory, are you, I mean, you do realize that this board, I mean, I can tell you a strong interest and strong feelings about this, right? And that's your right. But do you realize that this board has absolutely no jurisdiction over your children, because you have them in a private school?
I stay, I play taxes here.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
But when you say aren't...
I intend, I'm gonna bring my kids back into school as soon as all this mask and COVID travel is done.
Okay. That's certainly your right. I just wanted to make sure you realize, because you seem so strongly, you know, feeling about this.
Yeah, because my kids were in, in, not a public school. This does involve my kids.
All right, we've heard you.
Can we say anything else?
If you would like to say something, yes.
These, we're all elected. I mean, we just can't say, poof, you're born, because they're elected by you guys.
But there's got to be something that can be done. I mean, we can't just go around saying, hey, your kids can just die, and then just push it under the rug.
Well, you know...
Misinformation and pretend it never happened.
I understand. I get that.
And then she never even apologized. That's the thing. If she would apologize, actually apologize last week, I wouldn't be here today. But she didn't even apologize. She did not even use the words, "I'm sorry." She said, "I was embarrassed," and then she went on a rant about how masks were. Okay? That's not good enough for me and my kids. It's not good enough for a lot of people.
But again, we are elected, you know? We're elected.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, he was the only one who signed in, so we'll move on. Board president's announcements. I guess all I would say, because we had this early meeting, because we have a Thanksgiving holiday coming up. So I'm hoping that it gives everyone a chance to have a little bit of a break and some family time and some good food. And I wish everybody, the staff and the board and the district, a happy Thanksgiving.
Barb, can I just say that the Veterans Concert evening was amazing? I'm hoping that a lot of people were able to go. It was wonderful. I don't know how that stage can hold any more people than on that stage, but somehow it works. And it was a great tribute to our local veterans and any veterans that showed up. It was an amazing program, so...
We did put it on the Facebook page. See people if they didn't get to see the performance.
It was really wonderful.
Both the band performance and then the one act played.
I mean, to have the kids play with the, the community band members that are just so skilled is just what an experience for them.
I think you, you also attended some of the veterans?
I went to the veterans program. I was amazed by those first graders. Oh, my gosh.
It was very...
They...
It was kind of a last-minute addition. I know they were going to record it and just show a video of it, but Ms. Neview had insisted that they go onstage, so...
And they were right on key. It was, it was just great for first graders. And they're only, what, seven years old?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it really was impressive.
I guess maybe I am going to say one more thing, and this is to echo what you got in your district letter that Nick sent out. I think it would have been a week ago. I don't know if I read. But the district is desperately in need of people. So I'm going to say it again. If anybody knows anybody, or you personally have any interest in, in joining, you know, in participating in education at the professional level, at a van driver level, at a bus driver level, I mean, subs, there are all different kinds of opportunities. If you know of anybody, this is the time you can really help the district out. If you have any ideas or concerns about the district, I know Nick also reached out and said, "Contact me. I'm available. Anybody that wants to talk to me, let me know, and I'll schedule a time." But, yeah, we, we could really use any help of anybody that you can think of or you personally, because we're not exempt from what's happening everywhere, and that's shortages, you know? So, okay. Administrative reports. Superintendent, business managers report.
So the first thing I'll start with is the school board candidacy. Just important dates. So notice of non-candidacy must be submitted by December 24th. Candidacy documents need to be submitted by January 4th, 2022. The information is also posted on the website. So if you need to check in with that or follow up on it, it's right there as well. So, and that's...
There will be packets here at the high school for people to pick up if they want to fill them out. Jason always gave me a couple, too, in case somebody popped into my house. So I'll talk with Tammy about that next week.
Yeah, they're always available in the business office.
Okay.
School board convention, you guys were talking about it before, January 19th through 21st. If you want to get in on the early bird kind of registration, that deadline is kind of coming up quickly, December 10th. So that's annual decision on that piece, but those are the dates that it's proposed for. And then Barb, you just took all my thunder there with...
Oh, yeah. Oh, I don't think it can be said too much.
Yeah, I would just say that there's, this is, everybody's experiencing the same thing, right? Everybody's either moving into new opportunities or coming out of an opportunity. And just don't forget about education. You know, that there's a lot of things right now that make working in education difficult, but I can tell you that working with kids is an enjoyable thing to do. So I would encourage anybody, if you have the time. And frankly, you know, there's positions from a couple hours a day to obviously full-time positions. And, yeah, I think that it's going to be an ongoing concern of ours for not only this year, but the years to come as well, because even when we post stuff, you know, like today's, you know, first day a new custodian started in six months, so that's a long time to post stuff. And to get viable candidates for that is really difficult. So we have to be able to be relevant and get people on board. And certainly, we need to have conversations, too, about, we have people that have been here working their tails off for the last two years under pretty stressful conditions. And right now, you can go to Culvers and get a job for $17.50 an hour. So we have conversations that we need to have as well, because we need to be some, you know, we need to be in the market as well. And it's going to be a tougher thing to handle when we have all the constraints of our budget and revenue limits and all that. So, yeah, it's going to be a challenge, but I think, yeah, I guess we have to promote working with kids is why we all do it. So I encourage people to ask questions. I know I got a phone call the other day from somebody who didn't realize the opportunities. So hopefully, that comes to fruition, and hopefully, we can get people on board and go for management.
Madam President?
Yes, Dave.
You ask Mr. Gocher to speak up a little bit more?
I think you do that just to tick me off, Dave. I swear to God.
He's more horsey today, though. Maybe you should move spots.
I was just saying that there's a lot of opportunity in education to get involved. It'd be really great, you know, to work with kids, but we have to also have some conversations internally, since I can go to Culvers and get a job for $17.50 right now. So hopefully, you heard all that loud and clear, as you are enjoying your snacks. Is that like you tapping out, or what? What was that?
Was that better, Dave? Okay. Any questions for me? All right, we will move on. Elementary principals report.
All right. A huge thank you to everyone who helped to make the Veterans Day program a huge success. Ms. Neview coordinated a lot at the elementary school. Mrs. Massey, obviously, with her band students, Mr. Robertson and his choir students. I know Julia spoke. We had our fourth grade students write poems. Our first grade students, as Ann mentioned, sang a song. Our second grade students led the Pledge of Allegiance. So it was just a really great team effort, for sure. I actually had a lot of feedback from people who did not attend but viewed the live stream on YouTube. So that was really nice, a nice addition. We hadn't done that in the past. So a lot of good feedback on that. So thank you to everyone who made that a success. Our parent-teacher conferences are this week, Thursday evening, from 3:30 to 6:30 P M. Most parents should have received information and been able to sign up for a time to meet with their teachers, their children's teachers. Fifth and sixth grade are running more of a drop-in style conference, just given the nature of the teachers departmentalizing. They just wanted to keep it flexible so that parents could visit with the teachers that they wanted to the most. The P T S will be providing pizza for the staff, so a huge thank you to them. It can always be a long night, but we always appreciate the P T S, P T S's contribution to that. And then just a quick note about the holiday helpers. The program has been kicked off for the 2021 holiday season. Mrs. Jamie Robinson is once again organizing that. There will be the Caring Tree at Denny's. The students at the elementary school will be doing the stocking fundraiser again. And then all of the money that is collected at the elementary school will be used. The peer leaders will go on a shopping trip and get presents for the families of children who are facing financial hardship or other financial, other hardships currently in their lives. So just a quick note about that. If that's something that there's anyone who would like to participate in, I know that that form was shared in the district communication the last time that it went out, about a week ago. And then it was in the family folder at the elementary school. And we'll include it again the next couple of weeks as well. So that's all for me.
Yeah, getting ready for the holidays. Questions for Katie? Okay. Middle school, high school principals report. Middle school, high school principals report and Pathfinder update. Katie, are you there?
I'm here. Um, so two of my things, Julia and I are gonna have to talk, 'cause she took a few of the things in there, but I'll just over and over again. My first thing is the teacher focus group. So I have eight teachers that met last week to just kind of look over and think like what's going well, what's not going well at the high school, and looking at how we can use some of our SRF funds to focus on some improvements and, um, kinda getting students back to where they need to be. So, um, we're gonna be meeting every other week and kinda dive further into the list that we came up with and see how we can improve some of our mental health things and some of our academics. Um, my second thing is the student leadership presentations, uh, which Julia touched on as well. So the freshman English and social studies class did a cross-curricular project where students had to identify and research a leader and then they presented to myself and some other staff members. Um, and it was just a really great experience for both myself and the kids. Um, and had to discuss, um, what leadership traits that they found leaders that they researched to have and then formulate their own personal leadership philosophy. Um, so it was really, really great. I got to see some of the students that generally wouldn't stand up in front of that desk give some really awesome presentations. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. And then the last thing was just I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Lewis. So last year she was the middle school, um, English teacher and the art teacher, and she really wanted to dive more into the art side of her, um, degrees that she has. So this year she is solely, um, our art teacher and is really, um, taking it on. Her classes are full to the max and there's a lot of students getting to create more art than they were able to. Last year, the year before, um, she didn't wanna let her English part fall though, so she does an English and art integration class where the students, um, have been reading Edgar Allan Poe poems, which as we know are kind of deeper and darker poems, but, um, I know Julia touched on it, but they were able to, um, then make masks of what their greatest fears were, and the mask turned out really cool, super creepy as well, but, um, she's just really letting, kind of using art as a therapeutic thing for the kids and they're able to just, you know, get out what's on their minds. And then I just invite you to, um, check out right outside my office, the glass cases that Ms. Lewis has been putting all the new art and she updates it more than once a week, but things that the kids are creating. So it's been a really, really nice to have a full-time art teacher back, um, and then also giving them the experience to have that English and art integration class. That's it.
Good. Any questions for Katie? Thank you, Katie. Special ed report.
I just have one brief thing to share tonight. For our occupational therapist, we were searching for one for most of the year. A special shout out to Hannah Hurlin, who is the occupational therapist from Kiwanee, has been helping us out on a short-term contract, and she is phenomenal, and I really, really enjoy working with her. If only she could take on more hours to help meet the needs of our students. I would fight for that because she is that good. But Purvea, who we contract out to for occupational therapist and physical therapist, got back to us last week that they have found us an occupational therapist that will hopefully start, um, starting December first with Purvea and then hopefully with us shortly after, so.
Excellent.
Good.
That is all.
That will help. Yeah, it's always nice to hear. Any other questions for me? Okay. AlGoma Venture, nope, Laval, AlGoma Monthly Update.
Sorry, Teal. Oh, awesome. Um, just real quick, I think one thing I wanna highlight is, um, we are gonna be spotlighted again in the state of Wisconsin for one of our innovative projects. This just threw across my desk this morning, but, um, they're spotlighting our community youth advocate position. So this was a grant-funded position. Um, it was an innovation grant by the Wisconsin Department of Children and Families, and it is AlGoma in partnership with Kiwanee County. And the first year we did really well and they gave us continuation grant dollars. And now that grant is ending, but of all of the kind of innovation funds they disseminated in the state of Wisconsin, they are selecting ours and two others to spread and scale, um, the model. And they're going to be spotlighting, um, both the position but also our process. So we've done some creative things. We'd have like a youth profile, um, that kinda connects three systems together. And then our resource, um, mobile resource center, they're spotlighting. And then the third thing is our Connect the Dots program, which essentially asks our children to identify five people outside of school and outside of their home that they can, um, go to for safe, trusted support if they need it, really thinking about community and other people beyond, um, who they normally see. So they are, uh, taking those three and, um, I can foresee, I don't have any verification, but I can foresee this then being, you know, grant funds later for other communities to try to adapt something like this in their own county. So if, once I get word that they've posted that, I will definitely send it through, um, and that's.
So you're saying they're renewing the funding for us?
They're not renewing our funding, um, but they did renew it, so it was a year grant that we got in twenty-twenty and they saw our success in just one year and then gave us a renewal grant, um, for twenty-twenty-one. That's ending now.
Okay.
But they're spotlighting our program as one of the three best practices of all the counties.
And who's spotlighting this?
The Wisconsin Department of Children and Families, so it's through the state of Wisconsin, but specifically that department. And they'll be spotlighting it through something called their issue briefs and their website.
Got it.
I know, last time I said it too fast and then.
I said, I told Tammy, "Go talk to Teal."
Uh, that's it. I mean, we had a tour, um, the last time I talked to, I was mentioning that some people, some of our partners and funders were coming for a tour. If you've ever been on a tour with us, you know, it's incredible. I don't, we don't even have to give the tour. Our youth give the tour. They go to their spots. It's emotional every time. I'll just say one bright spot that sticks in my head. The people that were here viewing it, of course, they see all these programs and the things that we're doing. And, um, they went to Wolfden and there was this moment where one of our high school students was sharing, felt brave and wanted to share her story, and, um, one of our second graders sitting next to her just kinda like put her hand on her leg just like this, like in support, 'cause she had some stuff she was sharing. And, um, one of our partners emailed later and said, "All the things you guys are doing, like, we know it on paper, but when you're there and you see it and feel it, it's successful." And the, when that little girl supported the other with her hand, like, you guys are doing amazing things. Like that just told us all we needed to know, so. And were you there?
I was not at that one.
Yeah, so I just, it's the emotion that I think for now for myself or, you know, when we're taking tours, we don't have to be part of that leadership anymore. They have kind of taken the sale, so that's, it's really cool to see.
Yeah. Teal, what have you heard from Jason West?
He is ready. I think it's more on our end, Ann.
Okay.
He is great. I mean, he's got, um, the second phase done of our sub-pages. So right now it's just a matter of, like, our building principals are getting their stuff in a row to have our sub-pages, and then it's really gonna be a lot of work on ours, uh, our end to make sh, it's opening a can of worms for our district, let's just be honest. Because when you start to redesign a website, we know that there needs to be better communication internally, process-wise department, externally, but it's just opening up really good conversation of, yes, we need to do that, and yes, we have to do that. So there's a lot of light work for individuals, principals, department heads. So it's not on his part. It's really truly on us right now.
Okay.
I would say we should meet a subcommittee in December, like mid-December, 'cause then he'll be able to showcase examples of our sub-pages and what we have put together. And I know Jesse would like to come to the next one, 'cause we have some thoughts on registration that I kinda planted seeds about, but I would like to get that thought about now so that for next year we have a more streamlined process with that.
Okay, I'll set up a meeting. I'll be sure that it's okay with you and Nick and Jess. Okay, any other questions regarding the Laval Doma update? Moving on to the Venture Academy update.
We've been meeting one-on-one with parents, guardians, youth, um, just to check in and, you know, it's new. We're building it as we're growing it, and, um, Nick always says the hardest thing to handle is your success and it's, it's really successful. We have students on the waitlist and that's great. I think the word is getting out. I think people are trusting it more. I think what people, misconceptions or rumors are kind of, you know, going, falling apart, so that's good. Really, I wanna just share that being part of these one-on-ones was like complete joy for me in the last two years. Um, we've had a strong emotion from our parents, guardians and youth, um, in every meeting, and the biggest thing that, the themes that have come across is the development in two short months of leadership, confidence and taking responsibility of their learning. And parents see it at home, youth feel it, um, or seven through twelve. And I think that's, that's why we developed the pathway, um, for youth that weren't really engaged in their learning as much as they could be, and to get that feedback in just two months of school in every single meeting we've had was like pure joy, like a pure joy. One of the things I talked about, improvements, we asked, even when we said, "Hey, how can we improve this?", it was a collaborative conversation. It wasn't "you should", it wasn't, you know, "I have to", it was "we should together, this is what we want", and I think that was clear they wanted to be successful. So one of the improvements was communication and not, I guess, from, it's communication with the school district, and that was something that we already knew of, um, and Jesse was really awesome at helping us, but things like school messenger, like because we're our own, coded our own school in the state, we weren't uploading in school messenger for some time and we had, you know, we caught that later on. So just things that, not by, you know, on purpose, but we're figuring out, you know, those streamlined communication. Or with Katie Horn, if there's stuff offered in the legacy school, we just have to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not forgetting, um, each other and that, so. But that's really the only improvement so far, and where are we gonna go when we have more and more kids? That was something I think I'm talking about, so. I don't know, um, but really successful. We're hiring a full-time person and today is the last day to submit your application, um, but, you know, we have till midnight. So if anybody's interested in working in the charter pathway, we would accept your application, um, so, yeah, that's it.
Sounds good. Questions on that? All right, keep up the good work. Um, did we have any committees meeting? I don't think so. Okay, I think to our current COVID statistics, how are we doing?
Uh, elementary school is three, middle school, high school is two, staff two, total of seven. Um, so they continue to stay. Can you speak up, please? Elementary school is three, middle school, high school is two, and staff is two, so a total of seven in the district of a total of eight hundred and ten.
And that's pretty consistent with our last meeting.
Do we have a lot in quarantine?
No. So that's getting better as well, um. And really the, I think the only frustration is when you have a positive case in a household and then the quarantining of students in the household, um, it gets very lengthy. But outside of that, um, you know, the number of kids in quarantine has gone down considerably, um, so.
And there are more kids eligible for vaccines too, so hopefully that's making it.
Yeah. So in my meeting with Carrie today, I mean, there are obviously things that everybody is doing that is limiting all that, so I think those strategies are working. I mean, I, we did talk about how do we utilize testing to minimize lengthy, um, out of school quarantine, um, kids? So whether that be day five, test them through seven, 'cause right now it's day seven. But it's dependent on, obviously, people testing. So, you know, it might be a measure that we look into to decrease the amount of days that kids are out of school, right, so.
Is that something we have to change the procedure on? I mean, should we need to get together and take a look at that? Is that something we need to do?
I don't think we have to.
Uh, I, I think what we would do is just, we already have in places. So it'd be at day five, they could come back and then, you know, they'd be obviously subjected to testing five, six, seven, right? So that you can stay in line with the process. So obviously helps in that, but where, the other part where it helps is when you have a household case and, you know, getting that student back rather than waiting the ten days and then another fourteen days. And then you're knocking on close to thirty days of school, and especially if the child is, you know, asymptomatic. That's a really difficult thing to handle.
Oh, yeah, tired on the student, tired on the family.
Right, so I think if there's a way that we can use current practice and then get them back in the school, I don't think, you know, there's necessarily a board action. I think it's just a practice that we would employ if people are, you know, okay with that. And again, it's all dependent on whether or not people are going to be okay with tests, right? Because, um, if you're not, then I, you know, you have to assume that.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion on this area? Okay, we'll move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and the budget hearing meeting minutes of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one.
I still move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Ann. All in favor? opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
Still move.
I second.
Motion made by Nick, seconded by.
You might be a little here.
He just wants you to speak up louder. He can't hear.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dave, I will. I have a motion by Nick, seconded by Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the New Orleans Nashville van trip, April ninth through the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes, I said aye.
Oh, okay. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three AlGoma School District calendar. I still move. Motion made by Joanne. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion on that? We haven't really talked much about it. Is there anything that you'd like to highlight about it, Nick, or any questions from anybody?
Nothing, nothing really to highlight on it. Um, we will probably come back, um, with, uh, you know, suggestion just in terms of, um, February?
November.
November, uh, for parent teacher conferences, specifically related to the elementary school. So obviously, we have operated a little bit differently up here for quite some time, but just strategy around that at the elementary level as well, so that you don't have, uh, all the nighttime stuff that staff up here don't have, so. all the nighttime stuff that staff up here don't have, so.
Okay.
That's a, um, otherwise, you're out of school on May twenty-sixth. Um, again, you're starting a little bit earlier, pre-Labor Day, but just the way the calendar falls, it doesn't, um, make any sense to start after that, um, because you're losing the whole, the whole week of that, so.
Okay, any questions or discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the five hundred dollar donation from Algoma F F A alumni for Wolf Den.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
I made the motion.
I did.
Jennifer.
Thanks, Mike.
Questions or discussion on that, other than a big thank you? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a two thousand dollar donation in memory of Ellen McKenna, former Al-Algoma School District Physical Education teacher for the Wellness Center.
I'll move.
I second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't believe we have any recommended modifications, but I open it up to if anybody is going to make a motion. Hearing none. Request for future agenda items. All right, we'll keep going. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one, C E F and I, for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing, resignations.
I so moved.
Motion made by Jennifer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Roll call vote, Dave.
He's muted.
Yes.
Pat?
Yep.
Jennifer?
Yep.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Ann? And I also say yes.